Okay, not on the agenda, move on. In preparation for Thursday night, we will begin with our first agenda item. We have a special tribute, and so the poster, the colors, will be our, will take place by our public, or excuse me, our police department honor guard. And so, one suggestion, Councilmember Peterson, you would be the next one to introduce the scouts, and because some scouts may be anticipating being introduced, here's the thought we've got. Before the meeting starts, just have them come up, give them the Constitution, thank them for coming. Because we don't have it on the agenda, I think that'll work, and then they can be seated, and then we'll begin with the program. We'll try and do that just a few minutes before seven. Other items, the first recognition, the town manager and the mayor will conduct. Item number two, Councilmember Ray, I think you can help introduce the Fire Dog, looking forward to it. Agenda item number three, Councilmember Cook, pillow of the month. Agenda item four, Councilmember Taylor, the proclamation of Youth Week. And because there are several items on the proclamation presentation, probably just to look at some key items to highlight, the Elks Club will be here to receive that. Agenda item number five, nursing, see, the National Nurses Day, Vice Mayor Cooper, and same thing, just paraphrase it. The 5A will just be to recognize from the dais, we won't be presenting that. Number six, Councilmember Daniels, with our mayor's youth advisory council, if you could conduct that. And then the seventh one, we'll come back to the mayor, just because involvement that I had with that. Any questions?
Five.
Town Clerk Kathy.
Five B.
Mayor Lewis, just to advise, seven is being taken off the agenda, that'll be replaced on the May 16th agenda, and you do have a 5B for Gilbert Feeds Families Proclamation.
Councilmember Peterson, that has your name written all over it. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, thank you. Anything else that needed to be?
These items are being removed.
Okay. Great, thank you. For the consent calendar, items that we would like to discuss today, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, on consent, just number 17, and if we end up having time to do it, I'd like to talk a little bit about 26 and 29, but I understand if there's other items we want to discuss.
Councilmember Ray.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Nothing.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing.
Councilmember Daniels.
Just 29.
29, okay. Councilmember Cook.
Good.
Good, okay. The items I had, I was able to address earlier in the day. So, Councilmember Peterson, let's go to number 17.
Mayor, I don't know if we want a presentation first or not, I'm happy either way. Should I just go ahead? Okay. So, one of the biggest concerns I have with a lot of the tourism investments, if you will, is if there is a return on investment to be had, I honestly don't know, and I'll give you some reasons why I'm concerned about that. If there is a return on investment, I wonder why the private sector wouldn't do this on their own. I mean, I know they're in the business to make money. Also, I think there is some evidence to answer, to kind of point to this concern, in the February 23rd meeting, when we met with the chamber about the tourism contract, and I'll just kind of quote the minutes here. "In response to a question regarding the dollar amount provided by the Gilbert Chamber, Tilke said that for the last three years, the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce has donated these services to the town. The Chamber can no longer continue to donate these hours." And I feel like if it was truly a money-making proposition for the businesses, I don't think they would be concerned about continuing their activities, and I really don't think that they would refer to their efforts in that area as donations. So, anyway, those are my concerns with that in general. I also understand, I'm going to acknowledge this upfront, is that the same argument can be made here with this grant, as with others, that if we don't spend the money here, it'll be spent elsewhere, and that if we don't spend it here, even if there isn't a positive ROI, at least if we do spend it here, some of the money comes back. So, I understand that, and I recognize that I may be in the minority on this issue, but I think there's an opportunity for compromise here. I can't directly make a proposal, it's not on the agenda, so I won't, but I'll just say that I have three signatures on adding the following item to this Thursday's agenda, and it is discussion and possible action on reducing the bed tax by an amount related to what the town of Gilbert receives from the Prop 302 grant program. Depending on how that discussion turns out, I might be willing to vote for this item.
Who are the three? I, for Thursday night, as opposed to a study session? Can we wait two weeks and do it in the study session? I mean, is there urgency, or is it contingent upon this?
If we continue this one, too, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Now, you realize that 17 has a lot to do with the regional concept, and I, you sell homes, Jim Torgerson, I can't remember his quote, but you're not going to market, you're not going to sell homes, so this is the same thing. And I've seen a lot of the brochures that have had Mesa takes the lead on this, they've got Queen Creek, Gilbert. I guess you want to put a big wall around Gilbert and say, "Don't come in, don't tell people about Gilbert." I'd look at the three of you, and I guess I'd be pretty frustrated if we don't approve this. So, if it's contingent on the bed tax discussion, we'll have it, because that will be important to me, but I don't think it is, and so I don't think we want to rush it. We want to have material that we can look at, and so I just, I'm concerned about rushing an item for Thursday. But if you're saying it's contingent upon your vote on this, but I'll also look around and say if that's important for the rest of you, I'd rather have 17 get approved and have the discussion than not. So, Councilmember Cook.
I think it's kind of back to, again, I know that we're just talking about grants, but I remember the conversation last time about the double taxation. And to me, the further on, the further the discussion would be similar to, I would agree to take the federal grant money, again, this is just the discussion here, I would agree to take federal grant money, but then we have the ability to reduce the local tax to offset that. And I think this is kind of almost a similar kind of a conversation here, that we already have 1% going to tourism. You know, the question could be, well, I'm okay in taking the grant money, but we also have the power to reduce the 1%, as Councilmember Peterson said, that amount that we receive. So, again, it's the whole concept of the double taxation, I'm willing to take if we can give back to the taxpayer.
Did I hear you right, you're willing to let our Gilbert taxpayer pay taxes twice? That's what I just heard.
No, I'm saying lessen the Gilbert tax dollars to the taxpayer to take in some of his other money.
That's not what I heard. Vice Mayor Cooper.
Well, my question, and I'll try to keep it to this agenda item, which I think we're straying from or close to, but I think I'm hearing that $47,000, if we reduced our bed tax rate by $47,000, which is a rounding error, basically, for a hotel to have to deal with at their point-of-sale machines, that all of a sudden magically, you guys are okay with it. So, I got questions with that, but just in general, I don't need to have that conversation before I have this vote personally, but that conversation about bed tax, let's have, let's have it.
Right, and I guess my point is rushing it to Thursday is my concern, when we don't have a document to look at, we haven't given staff a chance to prepare information, that's a concern. So, do you feel like we really need to rush it for this Thursday, is my question.
No, if we can continue item 17, I do want to have them together for me, for my part.
And that's fine, that's why I looked at the other two, and that's my question, do you have to have that discussion before you can vote on 17? So, there's a no?
Well, Mayor, I would like to have the, I don't have to, it's, but I would like to have.
Okay, so, Councilmember Peterson, you only have two, you need three, we will proceed with 17 for Thursday.
I already have it submitted to the clerk, Mayor.
Let me go to Councilmember Cook, because that was my question, do we have to have this discussion by Thursday? We can have the discussion, I'm just saying it doesn't go on Thursday night's agenda.
I think what we've signed up for was a discussion about the reduction of the bed tax, if I remember correctly, right? So, to me, that doesn't have anything per se.
That's my point.
The wording was related to the funds we received on item 17, so I did tie them together in the way I worded it before I got those signatures, but.
Scott, do you have a point before we move on?
Yes, Your Honor, and Councilmembers, if there is, I heard the concern about a return on the investment, and there are formulas that we can use to show what that return is on this kind of investment, and what we're getting back from tourism dollars, and we could certainly monitor that in the future and bring that to you, to share that with you.
I've asked that question directly to the chamber, and I haven't gotten an answer that I can fully understand, and so if you can help me understand why the private sector doesn't do these efforts, if there is a return on investment, I'd be grateful to understand. I'm sincere in that request.
We can certainly do that. There are models that you can use that show the return that you get on the investment you make in the tourism advertising.
So, shouldn't there be private businesses that should be able to use those models to make money and run a profitable business off of it?
They're available, yes.
Then I would just say that they can do that, so.
All right, Councilmember Daniels?
I just thought maybe I'd provide a little bit of history, because it was about 18 months ago that Patrick and I and Melanie met with the president of the Mesa Convention and Visitors Bureau, who was actually the one that told us about this opportunity, that basically Gilbert's been missing out on. Because this was a voter-approved tax that passed in 1999, 1% was added to all of Maricopa County bed tax, so that we could provide basically destination marketing for our community, so those dollars would be brought back into the community in order to fund this type of, and in 1999, Gilbert didn't have any hotels, and so it wasn't really something that Gilbert could participate in, but now that we do have hotels within our community, that's why this opportunity was then brought forward. Part of it being voter-approved means that, and I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Peterson, about promoting, a local business promoting, there are marketing organizations left and right that promote, but they do it for a fee. And so, if you want our local San Tan Village or local hotel owner to promote the town, that's not necessarily a direct benefit to them. They want to promote their location over another, and they spend, the marketing industry's billions of dollars for hotels. We want to promote Gilbert, we want to bring people here, because it's a benefit to the community as a whole, it's a benefit to our residents, it's a benefit to our park system, it's a benefit to the vibrancy of Gilbert. We want people to come to the town. I don't care which hotel in town they stay at, I don't care what restaurant in town they eat at, I want them to come to Gilbert and to know that we're here. We're a town, and I think a lot of times we get sort of lost in the shuffle, people don't know that we're the sixth largest municipality in the state of Arizona, and they don't know we're the largest town in America, and all these different things that we, as a community, want to promote about our town. Home prices go up when demand is high, right? Home prices rise, and so the more people that come to Gilbert, it's a direct benefit to you individually as a home builder, to have more people want to come to Gilbert when you have properties here, just like it is in Chandler or anywhere else where you have properties. So, Mayor, it's a little bit of background information about why we even looked at this opportunity, it was brought forward to us, now that we have hotels. We've basically been missing out, I think, on the opportunity for the last six years as we've had hotels in Gilbert, but now that we know that it's available, and it's here, and it's voter-approved, and that the people who are visiting here are paying for it, I think that that's a great way, it's rental cars, and it's also hotels, and I think that's a great way for us to promote Gilbert.
There's an economic development aspect to this, too, and it, we're doing an East Valley branding exercise that you heard a little bit about, and in the recent debriefing on that, they did, talking to people outside of Arizona, had a list of the municipalities in the area, and Gilbert was just a very tiny percent. Chandler, and I think Intel had a lot to do with this, Chandler was very high, and so that goes to outside of Arizona, when there's a company considering coming to our area, they know Chandler, they don't know Gilbert. So, this has another play to it, and you know that economic development is my filter. Boom.
Mayor, and I am very passionate about it, too. I quote the Constitution on this, "How did the founders do it?" They said, "To promote the progress of science and useful arts by securing for limited times to authors and inventors the exclusive right to their respective writings and discoverings." The point is this, you protect the individual's right to keep the product of their labor, that is the secret to our country's economic success. And so, Adam Smith was right when he said that the product of work is the natural reward for work, and when we keep more of that with those taxpayers, that is the best way to promote the economy that there is, in my opinion. When government steps in, and we think we can do it better than the private sector, I think that we're wrong. And I think history shows that when it comes to allocation of scarce resources that have alternative uses, the private sector knows how to get it done better than we do. So, again, I'm not in the business of taking on business roles, I want to free up the markets to do their job, and they do it so much better than we ever will, in my opinion, so.
I think the point, though, that Councilmember Daniels made is accurate, the private sector will promote whatever group pays for it. When we're talking our municipality as a whole, that's why this process has gone forward, and that's why the, I go back to, from a bed tax perspective, that's the purpose of promoting the entire community, where you're using individuals coming as opposed to putting additional tax burden on. So, it's promoting the municipality. I go back to, for Thursday night, you've got three people, we'll have that discussion, but we don't need to have it Thursday night. And that goes back to, you have two that want it, you don't have three, and so, I'm just confirming, unless I hear differently from our legal staff, we'll have item 17, and we'll have that discussion when we've had a chance to look at the information.
Mayor, I, whatever Councilmember Cook wants to do, I did secure those signatures earlier, but I really would like to have the discussion at the same time, but I appreciate your input.
Thank you. Anything else on 17? At least the blood's circulating, that's good. Let's go to 26. And I think that's also Councilmember Peterson.
Thanks, Mayor. So, 26 is pretty extensive, there are a lot of changes here, I'm sure 29 is also pretty One of the main concerns I have here, you know, we talk about, the town manager is going to be given the power here to basically create departments. In the previous version of the code, he could do that, but he had to run that by the council and get our approval. That's something I'm concerned with, I'm not necessarily saying it's a deal killer, but it's something I think we should discuss and talk about, whether or not we want to continue to have that oversight of those kinds of changes. The other area that I'm concerned with is, there's contracts that the manager is, let's see, it says, "Town manager has authority to execute contracts and assignments of contracts so long as no town funds are expended." Well, that, you know, there are town assets that may be at issue with a certain contract, and maybe there's no budget, there's no dollar amount, but those assets have value to our taxpayers, and maybe as a council, we want to see how those assets are being pledged in one way or another, and so I.
Councilmember Peterson? Sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Can you put something actually attached to this, so I can follow what you're?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. So, if you go in the second page of that item, 26, it's number five in that list under section 2-58, powers and duties, thank you for stopping me, and number five just says, again, that it grants the town manager authority to execute contracts and assignments of contracts so long as no town funds are expended. And so, again, I can imagine there would be cases I would like to have.
I'm sorry, again, can you give us an example of something like that, where you, because I'm trying to follow exactly where you're going with this, and I need like some practical application in order to.
So, maybe we have, well, I know of one in particular, the bleachers discussion, which I know I was in the minority on, but there may be other town property, there may be, I don't know, maybe there's land, and maybe the use of that is part of another contract, as long as there's no budget, then that would technically be within the purview of the manager to do without our knowledge or assenting to it. So, I don't know, I mean, there could be all kinds of cases where there's an asset, a town, you know, taxpayer asset that could be pledged against a contract, and so I think that that's of interest, at least it is to me. Let's see, that's, those are the main, those are the two main ones for me, and if others have further discussion, I appreciate the input.
Councilmember Peterson, would that cause you not to vote for it? I understand the concerns, but is.
Those two probably are, I would like to see those changed before I would go forward, Mayor, so probably I would vote against it.
Councilmember Taylor, would you, I may have seen Councilmember Daniels. Okay, we'll go first and second, please.
I just have a question about the town manager piece, and I think this relates back to the discussion that we had two weeks ago about the correct range of employees per thousand, or however, I have yet to hear a suggestion from those who disagreed with a concrete number, and here's what I'm thinking, if we are not going to allow the town manager to be flexible with the organization, to put the people, the resources, and the talent where it needs to be in order to accomplish the strategic goals that we've set out as a council, accomplish the whigs that have been assigned, accomplish all these different goals, then essentially, we would like to manage the town, is what I'm hearing, and I think that's an inappropriate place for us. I think what we need to be saying is, here is the range of the employees, and you, town manager, have the flexibility that you need to accomplish those things that you've set out as goals to accomplish. And so, whether it's a lack of trust that you have for our management, I'm not sure, but I would like us to give our management a range, we set the policy range of employees, or however, you said that that might not be the more standard, give us something to work with, tell us how you want to keep our management within a certain range, and allow them the flexibility to develop and create the organization that best fits that. But we've then set the policy, and that's what we are as policymakers.
Councilmember Taylor?
So, there's a lot of parts on this one, and I don't want to belabor, I do still, I'll put it into three categories, there's 12 items I'm happy with, no problem, I have them delineated. There's another, I don't know, 11 or 12, about half I have questions on, it probably could be okay if I just have a few questions answered. There are a couple that I do have some concerns on, and I'll just give you the themes on it, if we want to drill in more and take the time, happy to do that. But, you know, to the points that I've just been talking about, you know, granted, I'm new, and I'm understanding council manager form of government, but as I understand it, all the power resides in the council, and then they delegate what they can, seem reasonable, that's where the balance that we're talking about here, but because we're the only ones that are accountable to the voters, to me, that's a reason to have at least some kind of review and consent in organizational changes, that's the right balance, where Patrick does have some flexibility, but at the end of the day, the people accountable to the voters are the ones that are just signing off, that doesn't mean we're going in and telling him how the box is in lines, but, so there's a couple of themes in there, in terms of, you know, if everybody was as great as Patrick in the town manager role forever and ever, that's great, if all men were angels, right? That's what James Madison talked about, but we know that people are different, and things, we need checks and balances. I think that's a good check to keep in there, is council review organization changes. So, that would be a specific recommendation, that's, you know, 2-5811, if we want the specifics. The only other one that I guess would be outside that theme, I mean, there's a number of other things that kind of fall into that theme, but it would be in the succession planning, and my thought is to just keep the director of public works, I like the original succession plan in there instead of the recommendation, so what I would like to do, after getting some more information, is potentially just go ahead and support some of this, but then there's others that, if I'm not comfortable with, maybe have the ability to, you know, not support or propose alternatives.
Councilmember Peterson?
I wanted to respond with some better detail, Councilmember Daniels' challenge is well-deserved, it's good, so the granting, the authority for, as long as there are no funds expended, I would say we could put a similar standard on that as we do when there is funds, and maybe it's $50,000 of value is pledged, if it's above that, it comes to us, if it's not, maybe it doesn't. So, I don't know, so that's an idea. But, my last comment on this, and I am looking for further discussion, and if it's Thursday night, if it's not at all, I don't know, but these are changes, keep in mind, these are changes. I mean, you know, I'm being conservative in the true sense of the word here, I'm wanting to conserve the way it was, and we're not, I think there's reasons for these checks and balances, as Councilmember Taylor talks about, and it's not just about who do we have now, it's about the design, it's about what are, structurally, how's it set up for the best possible result, and so, anyway, that was my final comment.
Susan, you might be able to help a little bit, and I think, Councilmember Peterson, when we had this on the agenda, and we postponed it so we could have more dialogue and study, and there's a lot of details, there's many items, and what I understood after the meeting was that, from a legal standpoint, you were tasked with looking at it from a comparison standpoint, what was a good fit for Gilbert, and this is what you came back with, and do you have, I realize I'm asking a general question, high level, and not getting into the specifics, but do you have some additional insight for the council as to, as this was prepared, what you found, and why it came this way, that this seemed to make more sense from your vantage for Gilbert?
Excuse me, are you talking about specifically the item, or the power of the manager?
And we could go town manager, start even higher.
Okay.
And just in general, and then do a part two town manager.
We started with the code that you have, with respect to the biggest change, which is the change to the departments, and the, well, there's two parts to that, and one, it reflects the current structure to some extent, there are, there is a Department of Finance and Management Services, and there is a Department of Public Works, and so those are called out. But we did look at other codes to see the detail that other cities included in their administration chapter, and some had more detail than others, some had, the manager created the department, some didn't have, say anything about it. So, in looking at your current code, which we were not out to rewrite everything, we were out to update it, we reflected the current actual structure as put into place by the current town manager, and then we refined it so that we did eliminate the powers and duties under each one, and we did provide that other departments and offices could be created, because that in fact is what's happening. We have an office of communications, that's not in the code, but that's something that the manager wanted to, and should be able to create within the budget, and to assign duties. So, it's a hybrid of looking at other codes, but also trying to conform your current code to what your current practice is.
Right. And the town manager, the department, this would replicate what many cities are doing?
Mayor, members of the council, if I could help clarify, this doesn't give the manager the authority to exceed the budget, to higher positions have not been allocated, it just gives some flexibility in staffing up, massing the organization, making some adjustments as is necessary to accomplish the goals and initiatives you assign to the organization. So, I don't see that it gives up control, so to speak, from a policy level, you still set the goals, you still set the initiatives, you still set the agenda for what you'd like to see happen, you adopt a budget, which is a legal document, which cannot be exceeded. So. So it, it's not taking away any of that authority or control. It's just providing for more efficiency, more, more operational, streamlining operations. I know in the, over the past two years, we have brought various things at times, and we've gotten questions, why is that even coming to the council? Well, part of that is because of our codes and the way they're currently written. And so Susan undertook a, a research project to see what was out there, what other cities are doing, and incorporate some of that into Gilbert.
Right. And I, I'm listening to the council because if there are concerns, this is the right time to bring them up and see if we can make changes. And the key word that our town manager just said is efficiency. And there's a balance between efficiency and accountability. And yet, you know, quoting another great person that's well-known, won't even go Constitution on this one, Father-in-law Jethro has a great sermon to one of our great leaders on delegating. I think that's what, we take the policy, we delegate it, and then you delegate as much as you can. So I, in looking at 26, to me, it was efficiency, where at any time, if there's something that's happening that we're not comfortable with, we still have the ability to step in. But efficiency is what I'm reading in 26. And so I, I'm glad you inserted that. And not that you were lobbying, but it was more your way that you saw it. Now, Councilmember Taylor had a good point. I, I think there's great appreciation, even in the last 18 months, of changes that took place. Felt like you did a good job of talking to the council, getting input before those changes were made. So in many ways, we had the dialogue, but it, it wasn't a formal agenda item. So I, I'll look for other council members. I'm hearing two that have some concerns with 258, if that's the right number. And Councilmember Peterson, anything else you want to add to that?
If we're ready to move to 29, it, it fits right into this discussion. So I, I do have a comment about that.
It's not that I don't want to go to 29, because as, as you said, they may merge, and if that helps, great. But let me go back to Councilmember Taylor, who had a specific list. I mean, you, you did 258. I'll go Councilmember Peterson. If you, you would be okay with everything but a couple of the points in 258?
The number five, where it's in executing contracts, as long as there's no budget attached. And then the, the earlier one in the list that was just creating departments without council approval, so...
Okay, so number two and number five, is that correct? Councilmember Taylor, is your list too long to note, or do you have a smaller list?
I think I can parse it out here.
Okay, please.
257 is the one about the succession plan. I prefer to keep that the same, in that the public works is still there in like the second slot. Director of Public Works, not an interim public works director. 258, I, I like to keep that one the same, in the interest of keeping, it's effectively a veto authority. I think it's a proper check and balance on organizational changes. 258 with parentheses 11, my comment in there is that the recommendation is to strike that whole thing. But to me, the concern there, I, I think it's an important statement to have a duty of a town manager to explicitly have responsibility to cut costs and save taxpayer money. Now, maybe I'm misreading what the intent of that is, but I think it's guidance to, you know, continually look at the organization and make recommendations on, you know, how to be more efficient and have that explicitly written, I think is helpful. Now, I can take guidance if I'm misreading that, but that's 2-58, number 11. And then, the only other one that I, is 2-398, item C. And this is all the way at the end of the document, 398, I believe. This has to do with destroying confiscated items. All the way at the end. I, I see, see value in having explicitly written in code, the requirement to destroy confiscated items like liquor or perishable items not used as evidence. And, and again, I can take input on that if there's, you know, good reasons not to do that. But I don't see a harm in keeping an explicit code in there to keep that as a standard for the town.
To, to keep, I might not have understood that, to keep the destruction?
To, to destroy it.
Well, state law changed, and that's why this change is there. It's conformed to state law. What we did was include the last sentence, which was to provide that instead of selling them to a licensed dealer, we could exchange them for materials to be used by law enforcement. But we, the, the code was changed from destruction to sale, because that's what state law changed to.
I think you might be talking about something different.
Okay, apologies.
Because I think that's with firearms and ammunition that's confiscated. Item C is talking about liquor and perishable items.
See?
Item C.
In 398?
Yeah, it's on the very...
Oh, I'm sorry, that it's stricken.
Yep.
I'm not sure. I would have to come back and answer that on Thursday night. I'm not sure why that is stricken.
Okay.
Any other items on that?
No, the, the others I just have questions on and will probably support, just as I get clarification, to, to the rest of the council. So we did postpone for more dialogue, and here's some more dialogue. And we have council members that have some thoughts of maybe making some changes or not moving forward with some of the items. I, I'll look for some direction as to, do we keep this conversation going on Thursday? Or do we have one more round and bring it up next time? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Well, I don't know what the pleasure of the council is going to be, but my, I'm, I was disappointed it was delayed last time, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I come at this being a citizen, basically, elected to office. I don't know how to run a town, and I don't purport to. I, I do try to understand what the will of the voters is, as far as our goals and the outcomes that they expect. And then really feel like it's our job to hire the very best person that we can to go out and implement those objectives. And fortunately, we do have the veto power. We have two, two ways of having veto power. One, we can can him.
Nicely put.
Two, we have budget authority. And so I personally, you know, don't read too much into this, but once the outcomes and, and goals have been set and the budget's been set, I don't necessarily care how it's organized. And not saying that I personally even know what is best. I don't have that level of hubris. And so what I'm trying to say is just, you know, we're a big town, okay? We're a town, but we're a big town. And it's, some of these things are remnants from when we were smaller. And we need to, we need to look around and see what the most efficient way to operate things is. And in fact, I looked at it, and you know, last time, I thought there was a little higher settlement authority in there. And this time, it looks like it's been reduced. And that was something I don't necessarily agree with either. I've always thought that we need to empower our, our team to do what they do best, and then we hold them accountable, just as we're held accountable. And so I, my personal feeling is I'd be ready to move forward.
Councilmember Ray?
I agree with Councilmember Cooper. My concern is I don't think it's wise on Thursday night to go line by line and vote one line at a time. And so if, if those council members that have concerns about this feel like waiting two weeks, they can resolve those concerns, I would say, let's wait two weeks and vote on it, the entire thing together, instead of doing it one line at a time on Thursday night.
Councilmember Cook?
So I think it was my fault that we continued, because I was out of pocket. And this was information, there was a lot that, for me to digest. So I'll ask for council forgiveness for asking for the continuation. Susan, on, again, this might be just for clarification, on the section 2-58, you, I'm looking at page four, I guess, 11 was, was striked out. But then the next one, the 11 is striked out, and that's a 10. You already have a 10 prior, so that really is 11, correct?
That really is 11.
Okay, I just...
Thank you, I saw that.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I could address a, a comment that Councilman Taylor had. In regards to the succession planning and going back to the, I'm okay with that. I don't think that's a, a huge issue. I'd be fine with leaving that the way it is. On item number 11, that was struck. If you look at item number eight, we added some in regards towards the very end, making some changes implemented in the greater efficiency of the overall operation of the town government. So I think that intent is still there, that that is the driving goal, to take all actions and effect all necessary studies to enhance and increase efficiency within our organization. Number 11, the primary thing was, as we make the determination to eliminate unnecessary positions, to, to just cut out the need to bring that back to council. If, if we determine that a position is no longer needed, we have personnel rules that mandate how we transition positions out of the organization through layoffs and whatnot. I just don't think that's the kind of thing that needs to come up before council. But to Councilman Taylor's point, I think that, that efficiency drive is in item number eight.
Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, may I comment on something the manager just said? In 2-57 on the succession, when the manager's not available, this was changed to be consistent with the adopted emergency operations plan. So if we keep it, if we keep it the way it was, is now, then we need to go back and change that emergency operations plan.
Okay, thank you for that.
It should be the same.
All right. So listen, and Councilmember Daniels, anything you wanted to add?
No.
No? Well, trying, and, and this is the strength of the council, different thoughts, different opinions. I, I'm listening, trying to summarize, I would say, that we keep it on the agenda for Thursday. And to Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Taylor, if there are some specifics that you'd like to have changed, maybe we've got it on a overhead or PowerPoint, so it's easy to see, or maybe even on another piece of paper that we could have our, our staff have ready, and we'll proceed. Now, 29 has some similarities. And Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, thank you. And I'll just start with this, there's only a few points. There's so much, I've read through this, actually, this is my third time through the financial policies. And I caught so many new things, I learned so many new things that I didn't know the first two times. And so I, it just amazes me how much there is to know. But in number two, under Budget Administration, it's on the third page, this is the point I wanted to make here. We talk about, well, the manager, he's still constrained by the budget. Well, so, yeah, at the fund level, if you look here, the town council adopts the budget at the fund level as a total amount of expenditures. Financial control is administered by fund, with budgetary control for operational, operational performance regulated at the departmental level. The town manager, this is, I'm skipping down a little bit. The town manager, or his or her designee, is authorized to administer a budget adjustment process within a fund between departments or projects. So if it's in the general fund, we can see reallocations from parks to police, or police to parks, and that can all happen without council knowledge or approval. And so we can say, you can't, it's not really all that much power. But when you, when you team these two together, this financial policy with the other, you know, we could completely eliminate a department and re-divert all the resources to a new one. And I know there's other constraints. There's certain, anytime council has specifically acted on an item, like we've got our nonprofit schedule drawdown, I'm sure they can't mess with that, because we've specifically spoken on it. And there's other things like that, state law and whatnot. But overall, I think that's an awful lot of, of power. It's not that I have a problem with Patrick. It's about, what about after Patrick? What is the design that's best for making sure there's accountability to the voters? And ultimately, as Councilmember Taylor said, we are accountable to the voters, no one else is. So that's one that, as I understand it, I don't know when the first financial policies was ever adopted, what was that first date? Is this a new thing? Don, can you answer that?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, this is the second year that we've brought forward these policies. These were originally presented to council, I believe, in August of fiscal year 2012.
So this is really kind of new in a way. Now, without this, did they have more authority or less? I don't know. It was kind of undefined. But now I can clearly see that between those two, there's quite a bit of discretion. I, I feel like we should have a little more oversight, but I won't, I won't belabor that. My two other concerns, main concerns here are, under user fees, you've heard from me before on this one. That's what I love about these items, when they come up in the future, I have a chance to...
Just brings back good memories.
Talk about them again. Under user fees, it's on page nine.
Mayor, I just want to go back to...
Yes.
Can we just go back for a little discussion? I just want to understand your thought process as relates to that budget administration piece, because I was trying to follow you. So everything has been budgeted and allocated and approved in, based upon the general fund, those dollars. So what dollars are you thinking the town manager could get access to making changes?
He can move the funds, as long as it's within the same general fund, he can move it anywhere. It's the way I read this.
And just to clarify, the way I read it is, any funds up to $50,000. And that's something we talked about a while back. So, and I, I argued at that time that that was too low.
Mayor, perhaps I could provide some clarification there?
Please.
There is a restriction between funds, I believe, if you look down towards the bottom, any adjustments between funds, departments, or projects, and any contingency transactions. So a budget transfer between departments, between funds, he can, he can approve up to $50,000.
So, but within the fund, he doesn't need that?
It does say also, or departments.
Oh, or departments, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, any, anything else on 29? Councilmember Taylor?
So I'll try to deal with this at a theme level, instead of just specific. What I looked at this, and I, I just compared this with what I've seen in businesses, best practices, when we talk about a management policy for finances. And one thing that was just missing is a commitment to save taxpayer dollars, cost savings, whatever we want to call that, you know, body of work, where we're looking at it. And I, I picked up on it and mentioned it in this other one, where we're kind of striking the whole duty of the town manager to explicitly look for ways to save. I, I'd love to see a whole section in there. Maybe number one is that, I know we have the words fiscal conservatism, but that's more talking about solvency. It's not talking about a dedicated initiative to apply black belts or green belts, or use performance management to, to save taxpayer money. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we're trying to return a lot of value, stretch that taxpayer dollars as far as possible. So, and this isn't about reducing quality, because you can increase quality and lower costs. It happens all the time in business, as you know. Anyways, that, that's a big gap for me, that I'd love to see us have in there, in whatever word. I'd be happy to work on some wording on that, or recommend some, but that's just a...
I suspect just an added phrase of emphasis on cost savings would probably overwhelm with the council. But it's not to take away, it's more just to add some emphasis with a sentence or two or phrase.
Only, Mayor, the only thing I would add was, cost savings, cost cutting, I'd really lean more toward efficiency, and maybe that's in there. I don't think there's, you know, I, I think it, it may go a little bit beyond to actually specify how those efficiencies are, are found.
Any other comments? So...
I may be able to help address some of that.
Please.
The last time around, I believe it was Vice Mayor Cooper, that did bring that to our attention. And so if you look, there is a theme, not only in the first two pages, where we try and address that, but throughout. And I can give you some specific examples, but we're also happy to incorporate other areas as well. If I can refer you... If I can refer you, for example, to page two, one of the, one of the top bullets there is to deliver quality services on an affordable, efficient, and cost-effective basis, providing full value for each tax dollar. Those are the types of themes that we really tried to thread throughout this entire document. And as a matter of fact, if you look, for example, at the, at the debt policy portion of that, that was a very key component that was threaded throughout that entire policy statement. When do we issue debt? When do we refinance debt? All of that came back to, how can we get, how can we do our, our business in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible? So I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Taylor, a very big part of the whole purpose for having these financial policies is to ensure that we're doing just exactly that. And we've really tried to look at that as a theme throughout this, rather than a specific statement.
Thank you. That, that first bullet she mentioned is a powerful one that I think represents your comments well. Do you, and, and it could be, Don, in pointing out several of those items would make you feel even more comfortable, but do you, seeing that bullet, does that help address the concern you had?
Yeah, well, I, I agree that it's good to have the spirit of cost containment, you know, permeate through the whole document. I would like to see it more explicit, not in terms of defining exactly what they do, but just that there's annual commitments, that people are looking at ways, you know, specific ways to save the taxpayer money, stretch the taxpayer dollar, make that go I think that would be a little bit more powerful, powerful statement, and give us more powerful guidance than whether we have kind of the spirit of the, the idea that, you know, we may or may not hit, it's hard to manage and set goals against, things like that.
Mayor, Councilman Taylor, would it help if in that initial section under purpose, as you mentioned, if we, wouldn't you allow us to come up with some language as a statement, as kind of a guiding principle, as those are, that, that addresses your concerns? I think we could add that, between now and Thursday.
Yeah, I'd be happy to kind of look at some wording on that.
And I go back, 26 and 29, we're talking efficiency, and I go back to Councilmember Ray's comment that it will not be efficient for us to try and do language from the dais on Thursday night. If there are some comments, please pass them on, and Councilmember Taylor, thank you for working, and then we can have them given to us before the meeting, and then we can proceed in voting. So additional items, Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just had the two, and I'm sorry I never got to them, but the use of revenue, or I'm sorry, the fees and charges on page eight, fourth bullet point down. This is the one we've talked about before. For services that largely or solely benefit individuals, the town should recover full or partial costs of service delivery through user fees. I want to suggest turning it into two bullet points, instead of the one. One that says, for non-elective services that largely or solely benefit individuals, the town should recover partial costs of service through, delivery, I'm sorry, delivery through user fees. And the other one would be, for elective services that largely or solely benefit individuals, the town should recover the full cost of service delivery through user fees. So any, basically the idea is, any service that's optional, people choose, that we offer, I think they should pay the full cost of, of that service.
Mayor Lewis, does that include victor advocate fees, or victim advocate fees, or some of the victim counseling services that the town provides?
It doesn't, and that's the thing. So this item doesn't, because if it did, right now, we would be asking for partial cost recovery, by the way it's written, because it largely or solely benefits an individual. So I don't think that's within the scope of this statement. If it was, we're already in violation of that policy.
I actually had that highlighted as something to ask Don about, but since you brought it up again, I thought we would. I think it's, I think we need to be really careful about how we word this section, because our cost of service may decrease, and we want the flexibility of being able to pass that savings along to the customer. And in addition to that, I think that without a, it is very time-intensive and costly to perform both an indirect and direct cost analysis for every service that the town provides. And with those costs shifting on occasion, I think we need to make sure that we're wording this very carefully. That doesn't mean that I necessarily have the specific language for you, Don, but I think we need to take note of the fact that A, there are exceptions, and B, we need to be able to provide some flexibility to passing along either savings or cost increases.
So, Don, and Town Manager Banjo, not that we've given the answers, but we've given feedback. So are the two of you ready to take the next step? Do you have any questions for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. So 26, 29, anything else?
The last one, Mayor, was just on the economic development reserves. Wow, how do I go about this one? I won't repeat Adam Smith and the Constitution, but I'll just remind of that. I initially, you know, I voted for this fund, I wanted to use this fund to promote the natural incentive to produce, which is to keep more of the fruits of your labor. That was my goal. I think I was a little naive, in fact, I'm sure I was. But at this point, I see this fund being used solely for picking winners and losers. I have major concerns about that.
This is page 18, number 16, right?
Yes, the very last page, last few lines, last section. So, I know I'm, I'm in the minority on this, and so I'm just, what I would like to ask the council to consider is to look at something that I think Scottsdale's done very well with, and they've adopted a higher standard than adequate consideration. They've said that they want consideration that is greater than or equal to what they offer. And so I'd like a line that says something like, this fund will only be used on projects where there is a positive return on investment that is direct and measurable. And that, I don't know if we can get that done, but that's what I was hoping for.
Andrew Banjo, how do you feel about that?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd have concern about the, the phrase "direct and measurable." We do do economic impact analysis and studies on projects, but I'd have some concern about using that language.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it up, and-
I would take it without that, if I can't get any better than, than that.
Any other comments? All right. I think we're positioned for an efficient, with some more dialogue, Thursday discussion on 26 and 29. Anything else in preparation for Thursday on just the agenda? I might, before we go to agenda item number two in the study session, probably more appropriate in this setting to talk about some current events that took place. Last week, I was in Washington DC with the GPAC team, there were 70 Arizona leaders that divided into four tracks, and we had several days of meeting with business leaders and also our congressional leaders. One of the great opportunities was in a small group to be interviewed by the Washington Post. They had an aerospace theme, and had a great opportunity to do a shout-out about orbital sciences in our community, and how they've impacted Gilbert with our satellite technology, and what they've done at Mesquite High School. We also had a chance to be at the White House, and in this case, we went through White House security and met physically in the Eisenhower Executive Building, and met with White House staff, and I just pass on from an Arizona perspective, they knew Mayor Rogers from Avondale very well, she's this year's president of the National League of Cities, and also Mayor Smith, who will become the chair of the Conference of Mayors in June, and it was just, they noted that this has never happened before, to have two leaders like that from the same state, and so I think for Arizona, that was a very positive. A lot of business discussions, and I think in representing Arizona, and representing Gilbert, to a positive experience, and hard to measure the return on investment, but that, that's part of the process, I think, for Arizona. We even, the very last event was at the National Press Club, where we sponsored a discussion on immigration, and had various viewpoints on that, but because Arizona sponsored it, there was great interest in that, and I think it came out very positive. So the one other current event I, I report on, and this is a sad one, I, I did not represent as well, this morning, at the International Olympic Bag Off Competition at the Safeway Shopping Arena at Warner and Lindsay. Councilmember, remember Denny Barney was declared the winner. What's that?
Albertson's.
Did I say Albertson's? What did I say?
Safeway's.
Oh, Safeway's on Agenda 23 and 24, yes, thank you. It definitely was the International Olympic Bag Off Competition at Albertson's. And Manager Eric, thank you. And Supervisor Denny Barney was declared the winner, and he did a great job. He cheated, I mean, he did a great job.
[laughter]
And the reason why I bring that up is, this does kick off the Gilbert Feeding Families, May 1st to May 31st. Last year, through the efforts and the town team members leading the way, our town of Gilbert, we provided 40,000 mils for families in need. The goal this year is 50,000 mils, and so we're off to a good start with the event today at Albertson's. And with that, I think we go to agenda item number two of the study session, unless there's anything else, current events, maybe? Councilmember Cook?
So, help me understand, you know, last year, we were competing with Chandler, and we had to wear those awful yellow shirts, are we doing that again?
No, now we're as a team-
I like to, you know, try to have them wear one of our shirts.
Chandler was doing some other events, and so this year, the, not to spend too much more time, but there were four baggers today, and representing the county of Gilbert, you had to rely on me, representing the county was Denny Barney, the supervisor, Denny Barney, representing the state was Representative Warren Peterson, and representing our federal government, from Congressman Sammons' office, our district leader, Chuck Gray. And so it was fierce, it was competitive, elbows were flying, but the, the positive from that, the gold medal that we're seeking is the 50,000 mils for Gilbert, and I think that's a win for all of us. Thanks for the question. Councilmember Taylor?
I sat through a, a quick meeting with the United Food Bank a couple months ago, and they said there's three things that are most critical when you have food drives. Peanut butter, peanut butter, and peanut butter. They say that's, that's the greatest need for some of the children that receive these. So that's, that's how the Taylor family is continuing to donate and support.
And the, the places where donations can be given, all the fire stations, the recreational centers, and town hall, and there may be others, but at least those sites can get us started, and thank you for the emphasis on peanut butter, that we can buy at Albertson's, and Safeway too, and a few other places, but thank you. Let's go to agenda item number two in the study session, the presentation on the proposed fiscal 2014 budget.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. I'm Don Irvine, the budget manager here for the town, and I have with me Nicole Daly, the interim Public Works Director. We wanted to continue our conversations tonight, or this afternoon, with you regarding the upcoming budget process. As we mentioned earlier on, we wanted an opportunity to come back and discuss with you the requests for, for each of the departments, get that information to you in advance, as we continue to compile the data itself, and come back to you with those tables and numbers that I'm sure everyone is so looking forward to. We will be coming back with you, with those numbers for the final budget, and for each of the funds and departments broken out for you here in the next week. So this, this afternoon, we wanted to talk a little bit about Public Works, and in the Public Works Department, you've heard quite a bit over the course of the last year regarding some changes to the organizational structure, some focused efforts that have been undertaken in that area to really move forward some of the council's strategic direction and strategic initiative. We'll talk this afternoon about water, wastewater, solid waste, and streets, and, and we'll look at ways in which we're continuing to move that organization forward. But you'll see there are a couple of really key themes here. What we're looking at in the upcoming year is addressing, similar to what you saw in some of the general fund areas, addressing some deferred maintenance and, and some key vulnerabilities, and making sure that we have those addressed, that we're managing the risks in those areas, and that we're moving forward, and again, that effective and efficient manner. You'll also see where a big portion of the presentation you're going to see before you is also meant to address growth. And as you'll hear a little bit more about later this afternoon, as we continue to grow, even during slower times, we were adding on a tremendous number of new customers, and this is really, this is something that you'll really see evident within Public Works. Over the course of the last year, in solid waste alone, we were seeing 250 new customers a month. Now, there's a bit of a delay when you look at that permit activity, so that's really reflective of when we were looking at over 25% of the total permit activity in Maricopa County. Now, while we're not seeing that 20, 25 to 26% of total activity, we're still well above 20%, and so our permit activity continues to increase, we're bringing on additional customers, an additional customer base, and we need to be able to respond and, and continue to maintain that level of service for those new customers. Moving into the next year, we are anticipating a little bit of a slowing in growth, even if we do continue to see this type of a peak, we understand that that's what we consider one-time in nature, not a sustainable level. However, we are still expecting to add another 2,000 customers next year, and so you'll see that, that the budget presentation before you tonight addresses not only the additional customers that we've seen over the last few years, and our ability to respond to those, those new customers, but then our ability to continue to respond to customers as we move forward. Now, with the dramatic changes you've seen in Public Works and the operations over the last few months, I've asked the interim Public Works Director Nicole Daly to join me up here this afternoon for the, for the presentation, and I'd like to turn it over to Nicole to go through the Public Works request.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. The goal this evening is to best utilize our time this evening. You've received an update overview of the budget requests via email, and so tonight's presentation is intended to be a high-level overview of those requests. We're certainly able to dive deeper as needed in any areas, whether it's this evening or through additional one-on-one meetings, to provide a better avenue for completion of the informational requests. As Don mentioned, there's a number of framework items that really formulate the Public Works budget, and what you'll see in this year reflected in our requests is, is reflected up on the screen behind me. Proactive and preventative versus reactive, safety improvements where needed, responsiveness to growth, long-range planning. Optimization has become the key word as we move forward, and, and this is really something important. As we look at this, as we move towards optimization, understand that optimization often carries a cost associated with that. Not always, but, but certainly sometimes, and so you'll see that reflected in some of our requests. On the flip side of that, the cost of a lack of efficiency can also be expensive for the town, and so we've done our best to balance those two kind of competing interests, to move appropriately towards optimization where it's, where it's high value for the town. So to start off, we'll go over the Public Works Administration budget. There's two key items in here, one is a utility rate study. It's been about over a decade since we've contracted out to have this done from an outside source, and so we do believe that the time is right to go ahead and look at the utility rates that we've got in place, make sure that they are appropriately capturing all of our long-term growth. This is a companion initiative to our long-range infrastructure planning, as we build up and revamp, and it kind of expands some of those plans, there's a need to make sure that we're appropriately compensating for that in terms of a rate structure. You'll also see emergency operations training in the budget, this is to provide an additional incident command center at the Public Works North location. This has been done in conjunction with our emergency management coordinator, Sherry Gibbons. Wastewater, these are broken out into ongoing and one-time, and so the first slide in each section will reflect ongoing, and the second slide will tackle the one-time requests. So what you see here is primarily growth-related, with the increased treatment costs, most of the growth is occurring within the service area of the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, and so we've got disinfection costs, as well as additional treatment costs reflected there. There are two FTE requests in here. We looked at this, again, from that optimization perspective, we do not currently have an electrician on staff, we have requested one for next year. Currently, we contract out services about $50,000 to $60,000 a year minimum, so it's kind of the, the average as we look over this, and that's really reactive maintenance. And so it's, something becomes problematic, and all of a sudden, we're going out and responding, and so there's a concern in response time and availability to mitigate that. And then on the flip side, as we move towards that optimized business practice of being able to complete preventive maintenance, so we don't get to the point where it breaks and becomes a costlier fix, how are we able to do that in-house? And that's also, as we go through regulatory changes, there's an item on the council agenda on Thursday night for an arc flash assessment, that's an example there. How do we mitigate some of those problems in-house, or address some of those in-house in a safe manner, in appropriate manner? We also have a request for a utility worker. This is necessary for the maintenance and repair of the sewer collection system and proactive odor control system. Again, this is strategically placing these FTE requests, can we do it better, faster, and more preventive, rather than being reactive to odor control complaints? Can we get ahead of that and provide a better customer service? So that's what that one is for. Moving on to the one-times, you'll see some- Moving on to the one-times, you'll see some repair and replacement maintenance items. Some of these are regulatory-related. We've got issues or requests in there such as a small utility tractor and accompanying attachments. This is for us to be able to provide the necessary current level of service moving forward. It's not a piece of equipment that's in the wheelhouse right now. It's something that we need to have to be able to appropriately discount and maintain our recharge basins as well as our lift stations. Maintenance optimization, these are two areas in particular that we're looking at with some of our pump disconnect boxes and our wet well cleaning pipes. Currently, the way that we're maintaining these stations requires an extra amount of time, which often leads to higher costs to mitigate some of the safety concerns there. So we are maintaining them in a safe manner. This would provide a permanent fix so that we're more efficient as we're going out for those repairs, and so we're mitigating those safety hazards on an ongoing, permanent basis. Oh, I'm going to back up on that slide previously. Standards and details, you'll see this reflected in each of the budget areas for Public Works. This is an effort in conjunction with engineering services to update the town's design standards and details. And so this helps standardize all of this as we build throughout the town, whether it's us or whether it's a private development. It provides that kind of standardized process that we would expect in terms of specs for all of our aspects. Water, ongoing. You'll see a business practice change that was implemented in FY '13. It's a renewal of contract for our safety coatings. We attempted a joint business venture with wastewater this year. We've seen returns on that. We will be continuing that into FY '14 for our safety coatings. Repair and maintenance items, this is standard stuff. As the facilities age, you're going to have more repair costs, like owning a home, except much larger and much more expensive on some of the maintenance. So that's what you'll see reflected there. Training, as we've worked with CH2M Hill throughout this year in terms of a management audit of our operations, one of the areas that we focus on in terms of optimization also included training and employee development. And so what you'll see in the training, ongoing requests, is in response to some of that. And so you'll see some of the management and optimization training, but also additional safety standards and training that's gone on. What is best for our employees is, you know, what is best for Gilbert as we care, take, and manage those facilities and those practices out in the field. Valves and hydrants maintenance, you'll see this again in the Long Range Infrastructure Planning presentation that'll be coming before council in the future. This is to properly maintain our valves and hydrants. We've found and done cost analysis that a proactive maintenance plan will save the town many, many dollars over the course of the life of the system. And so this is to respond to that need. It's something that we have in place this year. This is the additional funding to continue to carry that forward as we add to our system. Growth-related costs, a lot of those are self-explanatory. As you grow, as you add infrastructure, there's an additional need to maintain it. Even up to as we see an uptick in economic development activity, there's an additional request for utility locate callouts, for example. So it's all kind of tied in, and what we've tried to do is manage that appropriately. And so you'll see some additional costs there. There are two FTE requests here in water. One is an instrumentation and controls technician. We currently have one instrumentation and controls technician. We eliminated a well tech position two years ago. Since that time, we've added a number of new sites in the system. We have 31 remote well sites throughout the town for one person. So you, each of those sites has associated technology that feeds back into our SCADA interface. And so to only have one person to go out and respond, we're finding the business cases there to add, to be able to appropriately respond to that need. In addition to that, as online monitoring becomes necessary as regulatory changes occur, so we have an obligation to monitor those faster, quicker, and have someone to respond. There's a corresponding need there as well. The water distribution superintendent, this was actually a pilot program that we tried this year. When we brought CH2M Hill onboard, the focus was on the production and water quality side, and so we took distribution, so Blue Stake Utilities and meters, and said, you know, we need to pilot program and see if we can find a business practice efficiency here so that we're not ignoring one part of the system. So we piloted this year. Not only did we find, we were able to find some efficiencies in the operation in terms of being able to step back and look at how we're deploying our employees and how we're deploying the services that we offer. We've been able to change business practices, and we've actually been building in some of that appropriate long-range planning. So we'd like to keep that capacity moving forward. Ultimately, if we have a more efficient operation, it lessens the need to add FTEs in the future. One time for water, you've got some lab and testing costs in there. We've got some regulatory testing that we need to undergo. Training, again, this was identified in the CH2M Hill audit. This is a one-time training for Safe Drinking Water Act for our lab staff. Communications hardware, this dovetails with our initiative to-go paperless, which is one of our wigs, and it's also a technology leader component that, as we've taken that to heart and water and said, how can we do business better and in line with this initiative? One of the outgrowths of that is that we've been equipping our staff in the field with equipment to not only let them go paperless, which, you know, has some cost implications and some service level implications there, but more than that, to be more efficient in how we're providing and sharing information and responding to needs in the field in real time. And again, the standards and details, this is the water portion. Water resources is another component that we've been looking at this year. Couple of options that we're undertaking there in terms of training, again, best practices. This isn't something that has been present in that budget before, so there's a very small amount for that. And expanded advertisement of services. This is an important service that we offer to the town, and we need to get the word out there because that's the way that we get those practices embedded in the community, which has a return to the town overall. Water resources, one time. There is an option for a joint conservation research project with SRP, and this is a regional study on how the economy affects water demand, changes in conservation effort, returns on investment, and also looks at demographic water demand data. So if this is funded, Gilbert receives a working adjustable water demand model, so that actually becomes ours to use and utilize for our future planning needs. And we'll also be on the task force that directs the project and the deliverables, so we'll be able to implement our point of view and our needs and make sure that those are addressed there. Streets, ongoing. The need has been defined for additional crack sealing within our town. This is our most important aspect of preventive maintenance that we do. And so what we're looking at is the costs associated with equipping a crack seal crew and the associated material. In addition to that, you'll see a pavement maintenance technician is also included in this. And the need for this one is, as we move towards that optimization, we need to be assessing and we need to be looking at our pavement so that we can appropriately craft a maintenance plan to address that. And so that's what this individual will be able to do. Sweeping of town-owned lots, this is a contracted-out service. This is not something we currently provide. When we do need to sweep town-owned lots, we are calling individually, kind of one at a time. It's not really a coordinated effort. Streets analyze this, and so what we've done is put in a request to have this contracted out. The sweeping of the lots not only keeps them looking good, it actually maintains your pavement. It's going to make it last longer, it's going to extend the life of it. And so by providing a minimal level of maintenance that's appropriate, we're getting both the benefit aesthetically as well as in terms of the long-term maintenance of the pavement. And finally, landscape maintenance. There are a number of increases in the landscape maintenance budget. We rebid these contracts this year, and the costs did go up. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is just a change in the economy and supply and demand of the service. The other one is we've expanded the area as well as some of the scope of these contracts, and so that's what's related there. Streets, one time. We have an initiative to build a street sign inventory, and that's to GIS map and bring into our maintenance system all of our street signs so that we're able to respond faster, more appropriately, and better plan for those replacements over time. And so again, this is in line with that initiative of knowing what we got, making sure we're planning appropriately for how to maintain that, how to replace that as we move towards build-out and beyond. Pavement maintenance assessment, this is also something that is due in terms of our timeframe. This is in conjunction with the Long Range Infrastructure Planning Initiative. This is a one-time assessment to gain a view over all of our system of where we're at in terms of pavement maintenance, and again, then build in the appropriate response over time. And you'll see that feed into the Long Range Infrastructure Planning Initiative. Bridge inspections, this is actually an ADOT initiative. It was completed in this fiscal year. They typically, when they get around to finally having the outgrowth and the reports and kind of the outcome of all of that is when the billing goes. And so this is something we go through approximately every two years with ADOT. And then again, the streets portion of standards and details. Moving on to the last division, environmental services. We have an ongoing couple of things here. There's still no impact to rates, and the message there, and this goes for all of our divisions really, is that as we have seen growth, we have corresponding needs, but we've been able to balance those out in terms of what we're already charging for rates. And so we have an appropriate rate base moving forward. So you'll see that there. We were able to sustain the reduction that we put into place in FY '13. We reduced them 7.5% last year. We'll be maintaining that. Regional IGA for disposal and recycling, this is one of the initiatives that you've had discussion on already. And so the goal really here is for, to gain a long-term disposal option, so we have some stability in our planning. We already have the lowest tipping fees in the region, and there's an idea that as we collaborate regionally, we can achieve some of that economy of scale that's going to result in a better business practice for Gilbert. And so that's what that initiative is for. You'll see a request for an Environmental Services Administrator. This is an FTE request, and this one is specifically relative to optimizing the operations. As we've seen growth, we have not been adding FTEs at the supervisory, at the administrative level. And so what that does is that keeps pushing work up and keeps expanding that control for our supervisory level. In 2009, we actually reduced a supervisor in a residential, and so we went from two FTE in that position down to one. And so over time, as we've continued to grow and as we've added on some of our Go Green initiatives, and we've brought the HHW facility online, there's an expanded scope, and there's a need to respond from an administrative perspective appropriately. This position can also help manage the need for environmental services to respond, not just to the green initiatives, but specifically to things like what we have in the general plan and the associated liaison work that needs to occur with Development Services and to make sure that we're in line with our general plan moving forward, and also working with all of our other departments to find those efficiencies. We are requesting two and a half HEOs or Heavy Equipment Operators. This year, as we've looked at our budget, we've been balancing, consistently trying to balance overtime versus FTEs, and when is it appropriate to add more in overtime, and when do you need to bring in FTEs? As we looked back in 2008, we were actually able to cut two HEO positions due to the efficiencies in the operations. And so as we look to where we're at now, we've been able to sustain those. But right now, we have a need in residential and recycle collections to add these HEOs to go ahead and manage our processes there appropriately. Bulk trash process improvement, you may have also heard of some of this. What we're looking at is a green waste pilot to hopefully divert green waste from our landfill, which reduces our landfill tipping fees. There is not a corresponding cost decrease in bulk trash because we've seen the uptick in, as we're adding all those homes every month, those are new users on the system, and they're contributing to those streams. And so again, we're trying to manage that in the most optimal way possibly, possible, diverting where we can and where it's appropriate, and then retaining service levels where that's also appropriate. So one-time costs for environmental services, the continued addition of the compressed natural gas vehicles to our fleet in line with our current initiative that we have going on, being able to fuel those domestically. Hardware and software, this is a model that's very common in the private sector, and so what we're looking to do here in Gilbert is, as we optimize, is what's appropriate to bring over from private to public, and where do we see that return on investment? And so there's a hardware and software request that was actually approved within this year's budget as we went to go through the procurement process for that. The costs came in higher than we had anticipated. And so what we see reflected here is the addition to cover those additional costs, and that would help us deploy in-truck technology, similar to the PD, the ruggedized laptops that are in the cars, to help in-the-field dispatching, respond to calls for service, possibly reduce go-backs, and just overall run a more efficient operation. Right now, we're paper and pen in the trucks, and they come back and hand it over, and someone has to type that into the system. So there's an inefficiency there, but bigger than that, it's really how do you optimize that service in the field? We have picture-taking capabilities in the field when there are incidents or when there are issues or customer complaints. So it just overall allows for better business practice. And then finally, the standards and details for environmental services. And so in summary, I realize that was a very quick overview of those, but again, coming back to what is the framework of the Public Works budget request for FY '14? And that's really what's reflected on the screen here. We're optimizing, we're looking to become proactive and preventive rather than reactive, and then again, strategically utilizing town resources to do business better.
Any questions or comments? Anything we missed on?
No, sir. I just want to thank the council again for the last couple of meetings where we had the opportunity to go through the requests and what they represent. You see that the Public Works presentation is very consistent with what you saw with the general fund, the emphasis being on being able to continue to maintain the level of service that our customers have come to expect with the growth in mind, being able to minimize some of the vulnerabilities that we do have, and some in particular based on some deferred maintenance that occurred during the recession. But we continue to make this a very strategic budget, very intentional. It was collaborative process between all of the members of the executive team and the departments throughout the town. So we thank you. We'll be coming back to the council on May 16th with the preliminary budget.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I just think that our interim Public Works Director Nicole Daley needs an accolade from us as a council. She stepped into a position that she probably wasn't all that maybe excited about. I don't know. I'm putting words in her mouth.
Very excited. Look at that.
I love you guys. Don't get that wrong. But what I've seen is such an ability to grasp the information, and when you're sharing this information with us and relating it back to all the different levels of service, I'm sure you've received tremendous help from all levels of employee in Public Works. And I really appreciate all that's been done to make more efficient our Public Works Department and to really get in there and understand all that information. I'm sure it's been no small task, but we appreciate your efforts and all those who work with you.
I second that. Our Public Works team members who are here are just leading the way, not just in Gilbert, but state of Arizona, so thank you. We end the study session? We don't end the study session. Do you want to talk number three?
I have a suggestion.
Please, suggestion.
And I'll make it quick, Mayor. I suggest, I painfully went through some of our study session and council meeting minutes over the last couple of weeks and realized that, excuse me, last couple of months, and realized that most of what we talk about in study session is being repeated in our council meeting. And so I would like to make a suggestion because recognizing that most people on this council have not had an opportunity to operate without a study session, but those of us who have recognized some of the value and benefits that it provides, that we discontinue all study sessions, Mayor, until after. We have an in-depth discussion at a retreat. It will give people an opportunity to see both ways. I think we should all be prepared to be here a bit longer on a council meeting night, but I, except for the type of presentations that we've received thus far on budget and some others that we've received over time giving us an update, I think those have been extremely beneficial. But as far as the reviewing of the actual council meeting, I think we're just repeating everything that we're talking about. And so, Mayor, I would make that suggestion. Not that we would necessarily make a decision tonight, but put it on in your thoughts.
Any comments to be made tonight? Councilmember Cook?
Can I second that?
I think you just did. We have one more neighborhood study session.
The next one.
Is that the next one? That's our West, May 14. So you're not saying that one, but it would be after that. Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I'll just give one example from today. I've read the financial policy three times. That one paragraph, apparently there were parts of it I didn't understand. I even called Don Irvine to make sure I was understanding it properly. Somehow, I still didn't understand it. Today in study session, somebody pointed out something I missed. I find value in that, and then I'm ready for the meeting. I kept time to process what I've learned, and I've heard from my peers. I still value that. I think that I learn a lot, and so, but I'm willing to try the other way because I think you can't know what it's like until you try, and so I'm willing to do that, but I just wanted to mention that.
To our town clerk, Kathy, do we, if we stop some study sessions that have been approved? I know council meetings, we would need to formally have an agenda item in a council meeting, but do we do it for study sessions, or can we make that decision?
Mayor Lewis, sir, members of the council, we have looked at this recently, and there is no requirement that you approve changing the date. So you could cancel them if you'd like.
Okay. Without putting it on a town council agenda. All right? Any other discussion?
Susan.
Susan?
Only that I point out that we finally got the code changed to recognize study sessions, and we'll be coming back if you decide.
Okay, very good.
And I apologize for that, Susan. And I apologize for that, Susan, but it seems like the last several meetings, we've spent a lot of extra time, and when I look at the personnel that are sitting in on these study sessions, and I don't know that it's particularly valuable to have all of them here and have them taking time out of their day to participate in repeated conversation.
Thank you. Did you have a comment? Vice Mayor Cooper?
I'm certainly willing to give that a shot. The one concern that comes to my mind is, a lot of times, suggestions might be made to how we can enhance or change an agenda item while we're sitting on the dais, and sometimes when we have a study session, it's easier to digest those ideas, and so my only comment is, because I don't like to make rash, kind of knee-jerk decisions, that if we're in those dais discussions and new ideas come out that haven't been fully vetted or that haven't, all the research hasn't been done, I think we should be prepared to kick the can to the next meeting so we can have the right discussion at that meeting. And so, I would just say that we may expect to have a little bit more of that, but I'm willing to try it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so, to the town council, we have an executive session, and then to the public, a reminder tonight is the Public Safety, candlelight vigil at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Memorial. Community is invited to that, including council, and so we will end our study session and move to our executive session. Thank you.
You have to, there's a...
Do you want me to call the order? Okay. I called the order of the special meeting. We recessed a special, as there are motion to recess to special meeting and reconvene an executive session.
Salute.
A second.
Thank you.[1781.58]